...for the workplace. I translated that same message over to TikTok, but it was more, "I'm absolutely not doing this. This is not happening. Ask someone else to do it."
But some think this contrast is more than just punchlines. They signal something bigger.
Black folks, especially in this country, have centuries of data in their DNA of interactions with the workplace.
That's Corey Jones. He co-founded Prism Work, a consultancy focused on workplace diversity and leadership development. He says these comedians point to concerns many American workers are having right now, especially with layoffs that have hit certain industries hard, like tech and journalism.
When you have that type of turnover and with the way that a lot of those layoffs, those mass layoffs have been done over Zoom, it creates a common enemy. So who better to laugh at than the big bad corporate giants?
Jones says that the medium matters, too. TikTok videos are pithy and punchy, so you can get a lot of comedic bang for your buck.
Being able to find these kind of short, snackable moments within the corporate experience that make you shake your head, weep with tears, or laugh with joy is magical. And the people that are doing it now are masters at identifying those moments that make us all cringe and ultimately laugh at the trauma together.
In other words, when it comes to workplace drama, sometimes you have to laugh or you'll cry. Jordan Marie Smith, NPR News.
And today is April Fool's Day. Dearly noted, folks, but Scott, no tricks in the fact that we're a week away from the astronomical event that we've been waiting months for.
Deepa, we are serious about next Monday, when the moon completely covers up the sun. Total solar eclipse will arc from Texas up through Maine and up into Canada. Millions of people will be in that skinny path of totality, and millions of others can safely view a partial eclipse of the sun again Monday afternoon.
We'll be following all the excitement over the eclipse from beginning to end. You can hear live special coverage from NPR News starting Monday at 2:00 PM Eastern on most NPR stations. Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBRN. I'm Deepa Fernandez in Alameda, California.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the Museum of Science in Boston, dedicated to inspiring a lifelong love of science in everyone in museums, classrooms, and online, offering engineering design challenges, digital experiences, live presentations, and more.
That's the catch 22.
The 2:00 PM session of Roanoke City Council is hereby called order, and I will ask that current and meeting reporter please call.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Here.
Mr. Priti is absent today. Vice Mayor Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Here.
Mr. Volleson?
Here.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here. And according to the president, this evening, our invocation will be delivered by the Reverend Susan Bentley. She's the chaplain at Carrillion Roanoke Memorial, and we're delighted to have you here, chaplain. And following the invocation by Reverend Bentley, I will reach into the presence of the lead. So if you would stand in place and see, can you read the question?
Let us pray. Almighty God, to whom we must account for all powers and privileges, send down upon those who hold office on the Roanoke City Council, send them the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people and all creation through the Holy One, our God. Amen.
Amen.
Good news to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend Bentley, let me thank you for all that you do over Carrillion, being a chaplain there. I know that's rightly needed in the world, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, welcome, everybody, to first council meeting, but we've had, we've been in session this morning in our briefings, and so this afternoon, we're prepared to conclude our agenda. But the first order of business is a certification of closed meeting, and I will ask one of my colleagues to make that motion.
I move, with respect to any closed meeting just concluded, that each member of city council in attendance certified, to the best of his or her knowledge, that only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters as were identified in any motion by which any closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered by the members of council in attendance.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye. Thank you. All right, the announcements for the day, the city clerk's office is accepting applications for three upcoming vacancies on the Roanoke City School Board for three-year terms of office expiring on June 30, 2024. Three-year terms of office will commence July 1, 2024, and end on June 30, 2027. Incumbent School Board trustees are Michael L. Cherry II, Diane M. Cosola, who is not seeking reappointment, and Mark K. Cathy, who is not eligible for reappointment. Now, applications and information describing the duties and responsibilities of trustees of Roanoke City School Board are available on the City of Roanoke's webpage at www.roanokeva.gov, or may be obtained by contacting the city's clerk's office, room 456 in the North Sea Taylor Municipal Building, which is here, located at 215 Church Avenue Southwest. And this can be done between hours of 8:00 AM and 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Now, the deadline to receive application will extend it to today, April 1, 2024, at 5:00 PM. Today, at 5:00 PM. For any questions or additional information, please contact the city clerk's office, Ms. McCoy there, and that number is 853-2541, 540-853-2541, or by email at clerk@roanokeva.gov. So we want to make sure, let me ask, I wanted to find out, have we had any additional new members sign up? I don't even know their names, but do we have any additional applicant for school board?
No, we do not.
Hmm. Interesting. All right.
There may be one more, I think, that came in later Friday, and I'll check on that to make sure that who that person is.
Well, we got them till 5:00 today, so I'm gonna do that. All right, presentations and acknowledgements. A proclamation proclaiming April 2024 as National Healthy Homes Month, and I'm gonna call on Katie Kennedy. Katie, you here? She's the Lead Safe Roanoke Program Manager to join me at the podium. Proclamation here, and, all right. This is proclamation for the officer of the mayor here, and I want to read, I'm gonna attempt to read this, and then I'll allow you to come up and say a few words. All right. Healthy Homes Month. Whereas the month of April is National Healthy Homes Month, and the theme this year is making an impact, healthy, safe, and resilient homes. Since 2014, the Department of Housing and Urban Development and the Office of Lead Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes has used National Healthy Homes Month to educate public health and housing professionals, policymakers, and the general public about the issues important to healthy homes. After 20 years, the City of Roanoke has used funding from the Office of Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes to make homes healthier and safer for its residents in the city. Home health and safety hazards, including physical safety hazards, lead-based paint, radon, mold, and pest causes or contribute to a wide range of illnesses and diseases, including lead poisoning, asthma, cancer, and injuries. Lead poisoning affects hundreds of Roanoke children under six. Radon is prevalent in many homes in Roanoke and is the second-leading cause of lung cancer. Unintentional falls and accidents in the home are common and hurt many Roanoke residents each year, whereas many people are harmed from carbon monoxide poisoning every year, whereas many Roanoke families and households are unaware that their homes can have serious health hazards that are preventable. And whereas Healthy Homes Month creates public awareness about how housing affects health and empowers family to take action to protect themselves from hazards. Now, therefore, I, Sherman T. Lee, Sr., Mayor of the City of Roanoke, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2024 throughout this great seven-time All-American City as Healthy Homes Month. And I want to present this proclamation to Katie, and she'll come in and have a few words with us, and then, and then really tell us about her colleagues up here.
We're really excited in the city that over the last two years, we have really enhanced the services we're providing to make sure citizens are safe and live in healthy homes. Between Lead Safe Roanoke, Renovation Alliance, TAP, and Blue Ridge Independent Living Center, we've secured additional funding in the city and are using that funding and working together where, when we go in to provide a service, the home is assessed from top to bottom. It's a holistic home assessment, so that just not one concern is addressed, but all of the concerns are addressed. And we meet every other week to talk about the properties and the houses that we're working on and make sure that we are maximizing and leveraging the resources that we have available to us. And then quarterly, we have a steering committee where we also meet with Carrillion, Freedom First, and Roanoke Gas, who are also offering assistance to make sure that we're addressing the entire household and making sure that their homes are healthy. So, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Go, Zara.
You're gonna escape Helen?
Come on.
See, while Helen's up, yeah, Helen, so part of the reason Helen's kind of holding back to is Helen was involved in this program until just very recently, and she actually is now in the city manager's office, so we actually hired her as the strategic initiatives coordinator, so Helen is in that role. So even though she was recently very responsible for this, she is now here to take pictures, so, thank you.
All right. Thank you.
We've got two picture tables.
Come on, come on over, we'll pose here. This is the best. All right, colleagues, you have, oh, yeah.
Well, when, do you want to talk to them?
Oh, you want to go in? Tell me what you want.
Can we get a picture with all the council?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. They don't have to.
Go this way. Oh. Then she'd be behind the mayor when she said, "You can't see me."
Send it to me.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Carol always...
All right. All right, y'all ready? Just keep smiling, nodding. That look good to you, Helen?
Yep. All right. Great.
Thank you.
Let's do it, little hand. All right, the next item on the agenda is the hearing of citizens upon public matters. City council sets this time as a priority for citizens to be heard. All matters will be referred to the city manager for a response, a recommendation, or report to council as he may deem appropriate. Madam Clerk, do you have any speakers that have signed up this afternoon?
Yes, we have two speakers.
Okay, can you call them in order?
Yes.
Thank you so much for this opportunity to address you. I'm Frida Cathcart. I'm the Soil and Water Conservation District Director, representing Roanoke City. I'm sure it won't surprise you to learn that I've been reading a book called The Grieving Brain. It was written last year by a neuroscientist, and it's provided me a lot of knowledge and insight about the journey that I am on, healing from the loss of my husband. I know I'm not the only person on this journey, healing from grief. There's many causes of grief. But one of the things that struck me in the book that I wanted to bring to your attention was, a lot of times, the reason why people get stuck in grief and can't move forward is because our brains are literally encoded on building a map of our future based on our past experiences. This is really important because with the work that I do with parliamentarian procedures when it comes to civic organizations within government, this made so much sense to me about why we benefit as a society when we bring the collective together, because all of us have different past experiences, and we cannot figure out the best path forward for our future unless we share with each other our past experiences and problem-solve to figure out how to live together better in the future. I wanted to bring this to your attention because of my concerns regarding meaningful community engagement within the Roanoke community and the city government. I was excited to learn that Roanoke has been nominated to be an All-American City, but I was surprised to learn about the category, which is about democracy and community engagement. And there have been challenges with that, with Roanoke City, that need to be addressed. We have a wonderful comprehensive plan that was built before the pandemic with a lot of community engagement based on people's past experiences and laid out a good plan for our future. A comprehensive plan that included about building community trust and living in harmony in nature. I've witnessed over the last couple of years, long and contentious council meetings that are exhausting for council members and the public, and I think that is the result of the challenges of the pandemic and the loss of meaningful community engagement. So I've given these recommendations that I handed out to you about how to improve the community engagement. One of them is to make more time for when there's complex ordinance changes, to let the public and the council members digest it. I'm recommending at least 15 days, I think 30 days would be preferable, and I gave you information about federal and state policies that support that. The other thing I wanted to bring to your attention was really deep concerns about the Choice Neighborhood Ordinance decision that was made the last council. You do have that opportunity to overturn that decision today, and I really hope that you do, because it really did not have meaningful engagement. And when I did research about the Choice Neighborhoods program, I believe that it was marketed inappropriately to the public and to the members of council. According to the HUD website, the Choice Neighborhoods program leverages significant public and private dollars to support locally-driven strategies that address struggling neighborhoods with distressed public or HUD-assisted housing through a comprehensive approach to neighborhood transformation. Local leaders, residents, and stakeholders, such as public housing authorities, cities, schools, police, business owners, nonprofits, and private developers, come together to create and implement a plan that revitalizes distressed HUD housing and addresses the challenges in the surrounding neighborhood. The program helps communities transform neighborhoods by revitalizing severely distressed public and/or assisted housing and catalyzing critical improvements in the neighborhood, including vacant property, housing businesses, services, and schools. The ordinance that was passed at the last city council meeting was a broad brush that took in every neighborhood in the city without meaningful community engagement. This was not appropriately used, and it's very concerning, and it doesn't build trust with the community. We have time to do it right. I also wanted to encourage the city management to work with the Blue Ridge Soil and Water Conservation about flood resiliency. They should be looking at that plan again and to make sure that they get all the help that they can use. I'm willing to help connect them with our staff and stuff to help, and directors to help with that process. We have not been involved with it before, and I think that the city would benefit from that. Anyhow, I've run out of time, and I appreciate your allowing me to come and address you today. Please feel free to follow up with me. I will send emails with the hyperlinks to this information, and I hope you have a productive meeting. Thank you.
Jessica Blandy?
Okay.
Doesn't seem like she's here, so.
Jessica, she's not here?
She's not here, no.
All right. Okay, we'll move down now to our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the members of city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of the item. If discussion is desired, the item will be moved from the consent agenda and considered separately. All right, can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. Whiteboy?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the consent agenda is approved. All right, madam clerk, what I have is the regular agenda, on public hearings, none, and item number six is petitions and communications, a presentation of the Williamson Road Area Business Association State of the Road Report, and I'm pleased to recognize Valerie Brown, Executive Director, the spokesperson, and this is being sponsored by the city manager. So Valerie, welcome, and you have, you've been allotted 10 minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor Lee and members of the city council, and thank you for allowing me to share with you our report on one of my favorite topics, which is all things Williamson Road. And I've been chided already that it's April Fool's Day, but I trust that all will be well. So the first question I'm always asked is, why is Williamson Road so important? And the simple answer is that as the heart of Roanoke, as the conduit that connects the city and the county, as a thriving and vital commercial, business, and residential area, Williamson Road itself is essential for a strong and healthy region. Williamson Road, at almost 10 miles from end to end, is a roadway that is meant to help attract tourists, businesses, jobs, and investments, to say nothing of its job as a connector. And our mission, as part of that importance, is to make the greater Williamson Road area the preferred place to live, work, and play. Our goal is to collaborate with organizations that include businesses, property owners, government agencies, civic and cultural organizations, and the greater community at large. Together, our plan is to implement plans and programs that will help strengthen the economic vitality of the road. Further, a strong and beautiful and vibrant Williamson Road... Further, a strong and beautiful and vibrant Williamson Road visually is essential for the region. We plan to present proposal to the City Economic Development Office, talking about such things as planters, hanging baskets, public art, and of course, our facade grant proposal, which I will mention in a few moments. With this report, I want to talk about what it is that we want Williamson Road to continue with, that is, to ensure that the road be able to maintain its diverse retail, restaurant, and service options, which in turn will help to create that appealing community we all want. Public and private investments play a huge role in development. The availability of funding for projects such as facade grants helps to spur private investment. Several new projects are on the horizon, which will have the ability to transform many of the businesses on Williamson Road. I want to personally thank you, city council members, the city manager, and the Economic Development Office for their support as we work with the Department of Housing and Community Development towards funding for facade grant monies for the road. We also look forward to combining with other communities, with the city, state, and a few other personal grantmakers, for some additional funding to make an even bigger impact on the road. As we plan for events throughout the year and in an effort to encourage people to head to Williamson Road to shop, dine, and play, in November, we are planning a scavenger hunt on Williamson Road. We have to have fun besides work. This will allow us to highlight several of our businesses beyond just our restaurants during our restaurant week. This fun event will include our famous passports, and we have begun talking with outside individuals to help make this a collaborative effort. Events like the scavenger hunt will allow us to show off our road and bring shopping traffic our way to support our businesses and contribute directly to the economy of both the business owners individually and the city as a whole. And in talking about events, I need to tell you that we are hosting our annual golf tournaments on Friday, May 10th, at Hunting Hills Golf Club, and there's still room for foursome, should you be interested. And again, the revenue that we will make from that golf tournament will come back and will be placed directly into the grant facade program that we will be running. As part of our mission, our aim is to market Williamson Road as a destination for everyone. Our goal is to be the resource people look to when they want to know what's good and fun on Williamson Road. As part of our goal, we want to amplify what everyone is doing on Williamson Road and share that information about events, businesses, news stories, and more. If it's good and happening on Williamson Road, we want everyone to know about it. Our goal is to further create initiatives and reasons that will not only bring customers to the road and ultimately through their doors, but to help the business owners succeed the best that they can with their businesses. I have contacted Chief Booth's office, and we have a planned walkabout in the town square area of the greater Williamson Road on April 30th. These scheduled visits will be to meet our businesses on a friendly basis, rather than only when there's something dire happening. We want our businesses to know that we and the police department are interested and want to hear their thoughts, ideas, and needs. And personally, I invite any of you who would like to be a part of that to join us on April 30th. For the past few years and into the foreseeable future, we have been working closely with Roanoke City's Transportation Office, as well as with VDOT and USDAOT, on crafting, designing, and orchestrating a strong transportation plan to make Williamson Road safer, easier to travel, and much nicer all the way around. As you know, our goal within the next 18 months, hopefully, is to be able to present with the Roanoke Transportation Office a grant proposal under thriving communities that will be accepted and funded and eventually make our road what the community needs and wants it to be. Our shared office workspace that you've heard me speak about in the past, the Williamson, continues to be hugely successful. We have a waiting list for private offices and almost daily requests for conference room use, as well as use for the available open-air desk spaces. And as of 9:00 this morning, I'm proud to say we are again full up. We are in the process of looking for additional funding so that we can consider expanding to add three or more additional private offices, a conference room that could hold possibly up to 20, and a podcast space. And as we go down that road, I will keep you informed as to what's going on in that regard. Two years ago, we created a video that I shared with all of you that talked about Williamson Road and how the many businesses on the road supported not only what we were doing, but it also allowed us to brag about their successes. This year, we'd like to take this to the next level and launch a virtual tour, if you will, that will make it easier to explore Williamson Road from anywhere. The tour will feature panoramic views, allowing users to navigate and see the area in greater detail in order to explore venues, food, and shopping options. And believing that all good ideas are stolen ideas, so to speak, and building on our scavenger hunt event, we're talking about following downtown Roanoke's lead with our holiday gift guide. The gift guide will make it easier for neighbors, both local and not so local, to shop and support local for the holidays. We're pretty excited about what this could mean for Williamson Road. And finally, many would say that the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association is comprised of a close-knit community, and we are. Our monthly luncheons regularly host about 120-plus business owners, managers, and supporters of all things Williamson Road, and we want to continue to grow as many businesses as possible. In fact, this past month found us enjoying lunch with 135 of our closest friends. Williamson Road, parts of Orange Avenue, parts of Hershberger, even going onto Peters Creek and Plantation Road, all areas and side roads, we're excited to work with the city to help grow and prosper, truly one of our big goals. We are grateful for our partnership with the city with regards to your support of our work. And finally, with regards to our biggest asset, our membership, our goal is to continue to increase our footprint. We want businesses to be aware of who we are, what we can do to help them, whether it be big or small, to connect these businesses into a powerful network. And I'm happy to share that over the past year, our membership has grown by 35%, with the city's business members comprising 55 of that 35%. And I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the support, both financial and otherwise, that we have received from the city. This support has allowed us the opportunity to extend our footprint and, by association, increase the number of businesses we can help and be a part of. Financially, this support will allow Williamson Road to not only continue its work, but to also increase its reach and effectiveness, working with the area businesses and their concerns. So on behalf of myself and the GRABA board, we look forward to working with and for our business owners, with all of you in the city, to help make Williamson Road better and the best road in which to work, live, and play. We look forward to future collaborations and opportunities with and for the city in the coming days, weeks, months, and of course, years. Thank you.
Thank you, Valerie, and I'll, that's my colleague, if he has any questions. I recognize Mr. Volleson, and then Ms. Moon Reynolds.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. This is a great report. Good things going on in the Williamson Road area. I was just wondering about the Thriving Communities Grant and what that timeline looks like for going through that process.
Unfortunately, for those with little patience, it's a long process.
Yeah.
But we have begun working with the Thriving Communities Group. And in fact, next week, Bob, if I'm correct, they are coming to the city, and we're going to meet with them and then walk the area which we want to address so that we can move things along, have those small meetings that we do every other week, and then hopefully within 18 months, have a grant proposal that will be fully funded.
Wow, excellent, okay. And is the group of folks, I imagine business owners and renters, not renters, residents of the Williamson Road area?
Well, the group that's coming is coming from the US Department of Transportation and VDOT, and we have a core group made up of all of those. It's a smaller group right now for this initial walk, because you can imagine, and we just discovered it's on April 8th during the eclipse, that we're going to have 40 people walking on Williamson Road. But once that passes...
Sounds dangerous.
Yeah. But once that passes, we're going to enlarge those groups so that every person who is interested will have a say in the matter and be able to have all the input that they can have.
All right, thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome, thank you.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Brown, for the presentation. I do want to give you your props. You've done well with the Williamson Road area, you know, attend the monthly meetings. And I have to say, I've seen the growth in that. As you mentioned in here, when we steal little ideas, the one of the brag bucks, and I have watched that, where a lot of the businesses stand up and brag on themselves and share ideas. I've seen some growth in that and the connections. And all up and down Williamson Road, seeing some of the improvements. And I noticed in your comments, you didn't mention them, but what is most valued on Williamson Road? And I like that, and it's their diverse population and unique community and local culture.
Right.
Which is true, and the changes that you're making there. One of the things I got, it was a concern, someone approached me, in fact, at church, and was concerned about a car lot that is, that does not do well. It's almost like an eyesore, and wanted me to bring that to your attention. It's next to Hardee's, the one, not the one next to it, but adjacent to the next one.
Right, I know which one you mean.
That made a comment that as you go up and down Williamson Road, all the other car dealerships were nice and said well in the neighborhood, except for that one. So I did just want to share that.
Thank you, and it's on my list now.
I don't know who else to share it with, other than you and maybe the, you know, the city, but I wanted to bring it to you first.
Thank you, because I've had a few comments, not about that place in particular, but I've been able to go to my person, whoever that person is, at that day in the city, and been able to do something, so I'll definitely follow up on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, and on the walkabout, you have on April 30th, but I don't see a time.
Oh, 3:00 to 4:00. And we'll be meeting at Starbucks at Town Square, so people can grab a drink and walk around, and all the businesses will know we're coming.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Val. This is great.
Thank you.
It's always good to see what's going on in Williamson Road. Could you elaborate a little more on some of the opportunities that are emerging as you talk with businesses in the association and just along Williamson Road? You alluded to some facade efforts through grants, as well as hanging baskets and planters and that sort of thing. What are some other opportunities you're hearing from the community in terms of how we can support or hear more about?
I've had several businesses say to me that they think they don't matter because, you know, you've got all these wonderful things going on downtown, and then you have 581 and all the side roads. And it's like, they feel people have to go out of their way to come to Williamson Road. And in a sense, they have to go out of their way to come to Williamson Road, but we want to make it worth their while. So I'm finding that the more excited we get about things going on, whether it's putting a new awning on a building and saying, wow, this is great, and then making a big deal about it, they get excited as well. So it becomes not just trudging to go to work every day, but it's an excitement. So I'm finding that works, and a lot of one-on-ones, you know, walking in and saying, instead of saying, hey, I'm Val Brown, I'm the executive director, and I want you to join the association, I want to walk in and say, hey, I'm Val Brown, I'm the executive director, let's talk about your business, let's see what we can do. And I have recently joined, or had several conversations with The Front magazine, and we're talking about doing a huge spread on Williamson Road, just to get everybody excited about it. I guess it was done several years ago before I came to town, and we're going to do it bigger and better, we're talking about that. And it'll come out right before we do the scavenger hunt, so we just want everybody to know we're there. And when we did the restaurant week with the passports, that was huge all over the city, everybody loved it. So I want to do it again.
Great.
And get everybody involved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jones?
Hey, Ms. Brown, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would like to know, what does the diversity make up with the members of RAB?
Good question, because that changes a lot. Six years ago, I might have said mainly maybe 75% white, but I see that changing now. We have a lot of people moved into the area from other countries, from other states. We have people who are excited and they help each other. Like, for instance, if I could talk about the Williamson, for instance, we have 11 opportunities to rent office space there, and they're all full. And we have African Americans, we have Japanese, we have Indian, and ironically and fun on my end to watch, they become clients of each other's as well. So that, to me, is a huge success, and that's what I want to keep happening. But to break it down, I'd have to go back and really look at that, but it's far, far more diverse and far more fun than it was in the past, if I can say that.
Do you have a list of those members that are part of your...
I do.
Okay. If you don't mind sharing that with me.
Sure, I'd be happy to share it with you.
And also, I want to commend you from that wonderful workspace that you have. I know people feel very welcome coming into your space, so thank you for that.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, good report. Valerie, let me ask you something, though. I've mentioned this to Ms. Cowell. There was a citizen, a couple citizens, came to me and talked to me about the area right across from O'Reilly, there's a restaurant, I don't think it's used that much, but I think it still may be being used, but there seems to be right there, a lot of accidents that occur right in that area. Have anybody mentioned that to you in terms of putting up cones or barrels? Because it seems like it's every weekend, well, every other weekend or during the week, there's a bus stop right in front of O'Reilly's, and in fact, traffic or at least accidents occur routinely on that. Are you aware of that?
Right, when I was here last time, you mentioned that to me. So, and I don't live too awfully far from that, I live towards the top of Wentworth. So I made sure I came down and I sat there, in fact, I had people from my office sit there as well. And I didn't see so much accidents happening, but I see people sliding through stop signs or trying to make the corner before that coming car is. So I do share that concern, and I do want to talk to Dwayne and his folks about what we could do to slow it down. But I do see in the neighborhoods up there, and I've had the school mention it, that people just slide through the stop signs, there's no stopping anywhere.
Well, thank you for checking that out for me.
Sure.
And also, I used to get invitations to lunch for the Williamson Road group, but I don't seem to get them anymore. Is it something I said or did?
No, in fact, I gave you the first Williamson Road golfer.
I got you, I understand that, and I appreciate that.
I will go back and rectify that immediately.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, thank you so much. Thank you, everyone.
All right, thank you, Valerie.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, we will now move to item seven on our agenda, reports of city officers, the comments of city manager. We had our briefing, we have known this morning and this afternoon, and the item recommended for action is 718, is an acquisition of real property rights for the Aviation Drive Valley View Boulevard pedestrian improvements. There's an ordinance.
Move ordinance.
Second.
Madam Clerk, could you read the title paragraph, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance providing for the acquisition of real property rights needed by the city in connection with the Aviation Drive Valley View Boulevard Pedestrian Improvements Project. Authorizing city staff to acquire such property rights by negotiation for the city. Authorizing the city manager to execute appropriate acquisition documents and dispensing with the second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. Is there any discussion among council on this item? I hear you, no one. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Sanchez Jones?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Cobb?
Aye.
Ms. White Boyd?
Aye.
Mr. Volleson?
Aye.
Ms. Moon Reynolds?
Aye.
And Mayor Lee?
Aye, and the ordinance passes. Thank you. Item number 71B is the adoption of Tax Year 2024 Personal Property Tax Relief Act Percentage. There's a resolution.
Move the resolution. Move the resolution.
Second.
Madam Clerk, please read the title paragraph.
A resolution setting the allocation percentage for our personal property tax relief in the city of Roanoke for the 2024 tax year.
All right. Is there any discussion by members of council?
Mr. Mayor, if I may just, I know we cover this every year, but because it's always confusing every year, sort of explain really quickly here what this is, and certainly the commissioners here, if there's any questions also. So back in 1998, this act was approved at the General Assembly, which was to provide personal property tax relief. And then in 2006, the dollars, in effect, became fixed for the locality. So since 2006, the city of Roanoke has received a little over $8 million annually from the Commonwealth as a part of its enactment of that act back in 1998. So effectively, each year, what we're required to do is take that $8 million and allocate it across the fleet of vehicles that fall into accordance for that relief. And it offers this year roughly 42% decrease in personal property taxes for the applicable vehicles. So that's what we have to do each year as we go through, and you have to take that action on that item each year, but that's what it's doing. It's simply allocating the money that we receive from the state each year for this relief. And again, every jurisdiction in the state is receiving similar relief, taking similar action as they prepare for their budgets. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Sanchez-Jones. Vice Mayor Cobb. Ms. White Boyd. Mr. Volason. Ms. Moon Reynolds. And Mayor Lee.
Aye, and the resolution passes. Thank you. I'm pleased to recognize the city manager, if any further comments you'd like to make.
Just a few comments. One of those, as Ms. Cathcart mentioned, and is, of course, as you all know, the city has once again made it as a finalist into the All-America City Award. We have joined 20 other cities, three of which are actually from Virginia. Only Texas has that many cities going to the finals with it. Danville will be accompanying Danville, and also Newport News, I believe, is the other locality. I will say that, you know, since Ms. Cathcart mentioned it, she seemed a bit surprised that we would be selected for a finalist in the category that we were, and certainly, I'm not surprised. And the three sections or three projects that we were recognized for are associated with the work that you all did on the Star City Strong Recovery and Resiliency Advisory Panel. So that was the panel that you assembled of community members to help us determine how to actually spend our CARES Act funds and also our ARPA funds. The other project that was a component of this was associated with the formation of the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board. And again, not surprising, that is something that certainly is not very common throughout the Commonwealth, much less the country. And then the other is our community inclusion programs, and these include longstanding programs like the Leadership College that you all have had in place for some time, but more recent ones like the My Roanoke City Academy, which is the one that Katie started to ensure that our new neighbors be here through, that are here through immigration programs, are able to plug into their community as well. So those are the three, those are three programs that are recognized, that I think continue to exemplify the community engagement efforts that we have within this community. And those are the ones that the All-America City program recognized. So we'll find out, in June, a group of folks will go there. The mayor may not know it yet, but the mayor will be accompanying that group, so in June to Denver, to go ahead and compete, and hopefully, we'll be one of the ones that are selected for the program. So wanted to acknowledge that. Also, wanted to acknowledge, there, as some of you may be familiar, there is a magazine called Governing Magazine. It's been around for about 30 years, and it's really geared toward elected officials and staff members of city and county government, and tries to highlight programs across the country. Back in 2019, it went to an all-digital version, and they recently announced that they were re-establishing the print version of the documents. So the spring edition is actually the first edition that will be coming out again in print version, and this is it. And the reason I brought it is because the cover story is Roanoke's Reinvention. So this is going across the country, and it's really focused on the biomedical work that's going on within the community, and is multiple pages. There are features in here that include Nancy Agee, Mike Friedlander, Reverend Leavon has a cameo in the article. This is kind of the spread that's in it, and I'll send a link to you all, to the document and stuff, but it really highlights the work that has been going on in the community for the last decade or so around economic development and biotechnology. It highlights the program that you helped us secure the funding for, using ARPA dollars to match the state dollars, to do the shared lab project and a bunch of other projects in there as well. So certainly would draw your attention to that. And again, I'll send you all the links that you have access to that story, but I thought it was a great way for them to kick back off their print version of that document. And then the final item I have is actually tied to, and I know you all know this, but I wanted to kind of share it with the group, also with Avon Ham, and kind of talk a little, very briefly, sort of about what is taking place rather immediately, and then what will be taking place following, and also what will not be taking place. I think that's almost as important here with it. So as you all know, in response to the recent pedestrian fatality there in Avon Ham, we made the decision, even though the street design itself is not a contributing factor, it did not relate to speed, we wanted to do something that would further enhance the safety of that corridor. And so fairly immediately, by the end of April, of course, we'll be installing four-way stop signs at two of the intersections on Avon Ham, enhancing the crosswalks, which in this case really means they'll be repainted, as well as they may be the zebra style instead of the solid lines. We'll also put up, where it's necessary, appropriate additional signage regarding the pedestrian crossings. We have talked with AEP, you know, they have, as you all know, they have a program to replace all of the streetlights in the city with LED lights, which are much brighter. There is a streetlight at both of those intersections, and so we have asked if they would be able to accelerate the replacement of those lights. So all of that is intended to occur by the end of April. Then, as you know, we'll be paving Avon Ham in 2025, and when that paving takes place, we will also, we'll evaluate each of the intersections throughout that corridor, particularly looking for where it may make sense to sign and/or stripe crosswalks. So if you, a good example is if you have been on Ninth and Southeast recently, where it was repaved, there are striped crosswalks and signage all up and down that corridor. In that case, there's actually a mobility track, so a two-way kind of bike lane there also. Something, an analysis similar to that will take place in 2025 with paving, as we do in most of our streets when we undertake that kind of paving. And of course, all of that is to continue, both to respond to the incident that occurred, but also to continue to implement really your Vision Zero efforts and complete street efforts to try to reduce those. So that's what's happening and what will happen in that area. The part of not what happening is, this was not intended to open up the idea that we were going to suddenly sort of infiltrate South Roanoke and put stop signs and all kinds of things all over the place. We will continue to evaluate the need for stop signs and evaluate the need for crosswalks and other kinds of amenities based off of analysis. So if someone feels that there is speeding going on in an area, we will certainly undertake a speed study, we'll certainly let Officer Tinsley visit the location and write tickets, happy to do that, as we have in other cases, including South Roanoke recently. And so we'll continue to do those, but those will all still be based off of the standards that we have in place, because in many instances, as you've actually heard even today, in many instances, placement of stop signs do not necessarily stop traffic. They do not necessarily slow traffic as we would all like them to do, and in some cases, they can cause other problems. There have also been a number of inquiries regarding speed bumps. We do not install speed bumps in the city. There are a variety of reasons for that. The most important reason is associated with the delay in emergency vehicles. There are other features, like speed cushions, where emergency vehicles can drive through. However, those also bring their own challenges, particularly to bicyclists and motorcycles. And there's also some evidence out there that shows folks who are actually driving through those actually kind of fixate their attention on those features and not on the road ahead of them, which actually may lead to some additional conditions that would not necessarily make it safe. So anyway, I wanted to make certain, I know you all knew pieces of that, or maybe all of that, make certain that we reiterated that, said that more publicly as well. And I also want to thank you all for the support, because of course, I reached out to each of you before taking that action, and certainly, it was supported without question by everyone, so certainly appreciate that, and appreciate the speed with which our transportation folks who physically went out, looked at the site, and I left one out, will also be redoing some of the ADA ramps at those intersections also, because they don't meet current standards. They're accessible, there's not meeting the current standard. So they quickly assessed those situations and also concurred in the action that we're taking. And again, it will hopefully make, won't address a problem, but hopefully, it'll make something even safer in that area, especially those two streets are the two street crossings that lead directly to Crystal Springs Elementary, so that's why those two streets were chosen, selected. Thank you.
Thank you. Val, did you, Ms. Jones?
Thank you.
Okay.
You go first.
I'll call on you, Ms.
Ms. Cowell, I want to thank you for your swift action regarding the Avon Ham Street Safety Assessment. My question is, have you done other assessments in other parts of the city?
Yeah, we do pretty regularly. So if someone contacts us, and sometimes that contact comes through you all, where someone will indicate that they think there are high speeds going on a particular street. Jefferson's one of those. Jefferson in South Roanoke has been assessed multiple times. To be fair, Avon Ham had been assessed multiple times, and rarely in residential, in residential areas do those warrant additional actions, because, for example, Avon Ham carries 4,000 vehicles a day. That's a very low volume of vehicles. But yes, we do, we will do those assessments. Sometimes we'll do those around either speed, and sometimes it leads to, you've seen us put out the speed indicator signs, we'll put those out. Sometimes it leads to actually PD doing some increased enforcement in that area. Sometimes, but rarely, will it lead to other kinds of improvements with it. We will also do those where there are requests for stop signs. Similarly, there are warrants that are required to be met for those, and we'll do that kind of assessment on those. So yes, we will. And then, separate and apart, so those are kind of like complaint basis kind of thing, separate and apart from that, as we come in and pave streets, we are definitely looking at those streets that we pave to determine what other kinds of improvements might be appropriate in those areas. Again, I point back to Ninth Street on Southeast, and that's how that one came about, was actually, as we paved it, we reassessed kind of what could be done in that area to increase pedestrian and bicycle safety. We did that on Brandon also as well, did it around the mall. So if you go to Valley View Mall in that area, there's all kinds of different stripings and signs and those kinds of things. And then, in the most extreme cases, and I'll use Williamson Road as this, where there is a known significant safety issue, and you all know this, I mean, that road carries a great deal of traffic, has, I think, going off memory here, but it was over, in a two or three-year period, it was like 800 crashes on that road, including a series of fatalities. That's a different level. So that actually ramps up to what we're doing with the thriving communities, what we've done with the smart-scale funding to try to actually, in those cases, we're physically likely to try to change aspects of those roads, because those are the most kind of significant and most demonstrated safety concerns and issues. So all of those are parts of how we actually do this. So yes, if you all come across folks that have areas where they think there's an issue, we're happy to follow up with those on the assessments. Doesn't necessarily mean it's going to actually translate to action, because it's going to go against those standards that we have to evaluate those against.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Ms. White Boyd.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pretty much Ms. Sanchez-Jones alluded to the question that I was going to ask, and it sounds like you are going to take a look at other areas in the city that might have some similar concerns and issues. The one that comes to mind immediately, Mr. Cowell, is over at Huff Lane Park, even if it's just signage, because there's not even signage in that park area where small children are. So if we could maybe, at a minimum, take a look, not just at Huff Lane, but I would say that would be one that I'm concerned about in that area, but other parks, to make sure that there is at least proper signage, so that we can start being a little bit more proactive.
Yeah, one of the areas we do try, so we do try to concentrate in and around schools and in and around parks. So if you go to most of our schools, and the intersections immediately around those, you'll see a heightened level of sidewalk, I mean, not sidewalk, crosswalk paintings and signage and those kinds of things. And actually, we just also recently received a request for a speed study on Preston, so that's another area that we'll be taking a look at. And then, of course, you all know from a previous briefing, inside school zones, we're also now taking the steps to move toward photo-enforced speed, photo camera enforced speed limits associated with those. And so that will still, the goal still is to try to get that in place at all of our schools before the next school year begins. So that will be another safety improvement that will take place in and around all of the schools that we have within the community. So we'll be coming back to you all more. Right now, we're working through the RFP process, go ahead and start getting that worked up, but that'll be another step that we'll be taking.
Have they done a traffic study on, I guess that's Huff Lane, it changes, you know, the name changes as it gets down to Greenland, but it's such a wide street that it tends to be an expressway, and that's unfortunate, because it's right there by that park, but if you, they could do a...
Yeah, they could do a speed study, that can happen. They may have already done one, and if so, I can relay that information to you, or if they have not done one, certainly, we can.
Okay, okay, thank you.
That's where they hit the comming, with one of the previous city managers put in the comming, changed the street number, changing that up. But I think they've learned to navigate that now.
Yeah, it's more fun.
There you go, yes.
Yeah, that's, you know, one of the challenges in a lot of our city streets is, you know, they were built pretty wide, and they were built to accommodate almost exclusively vehicles, and so wide streets tend to cause speed.
Cause speed, yeah.
They get excited on a wide street.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Bob, for your work on that, and all of the other staff that got involved to look at those things. It was a very tragic, tragic incident over there, that any time there's a loss of life, and especially when it's children, you know, people are really moved by it, and I think your quick response, you and the transportation people's quick response to that made an impact on people, I think, a very positive impact. So thank you, and thank the people who had to come together to do that.
Certainly, you know, the neighbors were actually all really good to work with on that discussion as well, including the mother. We've had interactions with the mother of the son that was involved. And also want to acknowledge the police and the role that they played. As you all know, I mean, the day, the, you know, following week afterwards, I mean, we still had, you just had someone who had been struck and killed on that road, and we still wrote 20-plus citations for people who ran stop signs in that same corridor. So, you know, I also certainly appreciate the work that the police did to heighten and raise that awareness in an enforcement manner. They'll do that periodically as we work our way up to those stop signs.
And the reset team, did they go out?
Yes, the reset team went out as well to be able to meet with, you know, it was a different use of our reset team, but, you know, the reset team is really there for neighborhoods that have experienced trauma, and though not certainly gun-related, this was certainly a, certainly a traumatic event for the residents of that area.
Let me just say that I look forward to taking that third trip out to Denver. We went out to get the seven-time All-American City Award, and we went back, I think, we were considered for an award, but we got the Hall of Fame. We were putting the Hall of Fame out there. So I look forward to going back to Denver, and I know the three, the two, two other mayors, Danville and Newport News, and they're just, well, one of them is just a near fight, so they need to find out that the veteran mayor needs to get this award, so.
It'd be really nice for that last state of the city to be able to say, you know, eight-time.
Yeah, that'll be something, I can pass that on, leave that as a legacy piece. But look forward to that. Proud of and thank the people. I know I talk a lot to our community engagement folks in Carroll for the work that they do down there to make this happen, and we look forward to going out and winning, and at least beating Danville and Newport News. All right, thank you. Reports of committees, we have none, and unfinished businesses, none. Introduction and consideration of ordinance and resolutions are none. Motion and miscellaneous business, inquiry of the comments by the mayor and all members of council. Ms. White Boyd.
Yeah, I just have a brief comment, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to thank our city manager for henriety at Alexis Plaza. She is in her glory now with the flowers blooming and the pictures that are circulating on Facebook. It really, really looks good. Good job.
And that was, definitely need to point out our parks folks, because they're the ones that, it was not me out planting those bulbs, so they definitely.
I kind of had you out there in gloves and digging bulbs.
They did a really good job, it looks good. And of course, as you all know, we're actually in process of redoing the entire plaza, all of the really ugly plants that were out there before have all been removed, of course, and will be. All of the really ugly plants that were out there before have all been removed, of course, and we'll be slowly putting in new plants.
Oh, it really looks good. I just wanted to commend you guys for that.
Well, let me say, when you first said that Henrietta Laxas is in her glory now, I thought you had a spiritual.
No, she just looks good.
It didn't. I thought, wow, okay. But I appreciate that.
Yeah, she's, she's really shining now. She looks really good.
I, 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 that's great. I understand that. When you said in her glory now, I thought you had a revelation or something.
Only, only Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Any other? Yes, sir.
Yeah, just two things, because these will be before our next meeting. On the 13th of April, we have the Daisy Arts Parade, which is at noon. And I believe the gathering place is still the same on Henry Street, just above the Martin Luther King Bridge, and then the parade will go into downtown. And then that afternoon from three to eight is the Wasena Bridge Bonanza, which is the big bash before the bridge starts to come down.
What day was that?
That's April 13th from three, three to eight. Yeah, so they're both that day. The Daisy Arts Parade is at noon, and the Wasena Bridge Bonanza is from three to eight.
The bridge will close shortly thereafter.
Right.
Anybody else? I just want to comment on, and I, I caught this in my reading last week, that Salem has contributed, made a contribution to the skate park.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I would like if you're, and I'm sure you will be receptive to it, but if we can, Mayor, I think it would be worth the council through you sending something to the Salem Mayor and Council for their support. So, yes, they have, after quite a bit of discussion, which started with, with a meeting that actually we had with Jay Talafaro, the city manager at the time, and then ultimately kind of crossed the finish line with Luke Pugh and the work that he was doing. So, they've, they have agreed to contribute, and already, we've already signed the agreement, $200,000 to our skate park project. And so, what that allows to do is make it a little bit larger, a little bit grander, and will, will begin to really be truly a regional skate park. With, we are having similar conversations with Roanoke County and with the town of Benton. Salem was kind of the first and was all in, so definitely a good, good move, so.
Yes, sir, I'll, I'll do that. Thank you, and thank the city of Salem and the regional cooperation. It's always good, makes you feel good, Bob. All right, vacancies on certain authoritative boards, commissions, and committees appointed by council. And I will call on the Vice Mayor, Dr. Cobb, to share that.
All right, we have several today. First of all, for the Virginia Western Community College Local Advisory Board, we were very saddened by the untimely and unexpected death of John Francis Jr. His death left a vacancy on this advisory board, and we're appointing Chad Scott to fill that vacancy in the unexpired term of office, which ends June 30th, 2026. For the Court Community Corrections Program Regional Community Criminal Justice Board, we are appointing Letitia Hawkins-Beatty, along with a residency waiver, to fulfill to start the, to fulfill a term for Lauren Eichenlob that ends June 30th, 2024. But this will be a renewal of that appointment for the next three-year term. For the Equity and Empowerment Advisory Board, we are reappointing Angela Penn for a three-year term. For the Gun Violence Prevention Commission, we are affirming a previous appointment we made to fill the unexpired term of office for Nicole Ross. This will be a new three-year term for Jared Rose. We are appointing Robert Lamore with a residency waiver to fill the term that I held. This is, this seat has been converted to a citizen-at-large member, and this will be a three-year term. No, actually, this seat will expire March 31st, 2025. A new seat created on the board for the Chief of Police, we're appointing Scott Booth. A new seat created on the board for a council member, non-voting. So, these will be liaison roles. I will fill one of those positions, and Stephanie Moon Reynolds will fill the other position. We are reappointing Stephen Terry McGuire to the Mill Mountain Advisory Board. We're appointing Robin Dearing to the Personnel and Employment Practices Commission. She will be completing a three-year term of office for Julie Wagner, citizen-at-large that ends in June, and then will carry on to a new three-year term. Roanoke Arts Commission, we're reappointing Carl Willers for a new three-year term. For Visit Virginia's Blue Ridge Board of Directors, we are appointing Jennifer Eddy to a new one-year term. And Allison Oakey to a new one-year term. For the Youth Athletics Review Board, we appointed previously Patricia Atkinson, but we neglected to approve the residency waiver, so we will do that today. And Mayor, I believe that is everything.
Thank you. As the clerk will call the row, council, if you're in agreement with all of the names that have been appointed and reappointed, would you please say so by voting all nominees? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
All nominees?
All nominees.
Vice Mayor Cobb.
All nominees.
Ms. White Boyd.
All nominees.
Ms. DeVallison.
All nominees.
Ms. Moon Reynolds.
All nominees.
And Mayor Lee.
All nominees. Thank you. All right, if that's all the business we've got today. All right, there being no further business to therefore to come before the council. This council meeting is adjourned. Thank you.